Yeah, let's go. We'll be good. Hey, good morning. Let's call the June 2nd, 2022 Planning Commission to order. Mr. Slay, how do you feel today? I don't see my word. He hides on me on these nine o'clock timeframes. Well, he's got, yeah, I mean, he's like, he's got his hunter's orange on today. Do you mind, so how do you feel today? I know you've been battling some weather.
Yes.
You've got a good haircut and you look good, so.
I got, I got.
Give us a little quick.
My, my late father-in-law would say, I got an estimate.
Yeah, well, it looks good. It looks good.
All right. For God, thank you for the day you give us and for this time of fellowship together, this time of coming together to serve our community. Thank you, Lord, for this place we call home. What a blessing it is to be a part of this community and to know that, Lord, you have just blessed us abundantly. To know, Father, that you've given us skills and abilities that can be made useful for your service, that we can help our fellow man, that we can make this community a better place. Thank you for these men that have committed themselves to that end. I pray that they would receive today the discernment and the wisdom that they need from you, Lord, that they would, that they would be blessed in their time of service and that you will bless them, Father, as they, as they do what you've called them to do. Thank you for our men and women, our first responders, our law enforcement folks that take good care of us. Lord God, thank you for blessing us with them and their sacrifices, the sacrifices of their family. Protect them and bring them home safely in Christ's name.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Slay. All right, into the Planning Commission minutes. Item number two is approval and consideration of April 28 minutes. The board wishes to entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Motion by Mr. Morrison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with the like sign. Mr. Renee, I'm showing no old business under item three?
That's correct.
All right, so then item four, new considerations. We have item number one. Mr. Renee. These are all for what?
Planning.
All right. For public comment? Just comments or sign-in sheets?
Yeah, those are signed.
Gotcha. Thank you. We'll figure it out as we go. I kind of like autumn's jeans, you know?
Gotcha.
Perfect. Did you fill these out yourself? All right, Mr. Renee, item number one under section four, new considerations.
All right, so the first item is a rezoning request by Michael and Todd Means at Highway 43 Owen Boone and Gabe Holcomb Road. The Means are seeking to rezone 19.64 acres from A2 to RE1. That's an aerial view of that property. They're proposing a six-lot residential development. All of the lots will have frontage on the public road. The lots range in size from two acres to 5.2 acres. They're proposing a minimum heated and cooled square footage of 2,200 square feet. There will be restrictive covenants that say mobile manufactured and modular homes will be prohibited. These are views of that property.
Mr. Renee, this is going to be, it's not 43, it's 13 north.
Is it? Okay, sorry. Oh, I said that, that's right. I have 13 north. I'm sorry. Misspoke. So these are surrounding properties.
Yeah, so it's Highway 13 north?
Yeah, it's Highway 13 north.
I just missed that.
That's a typo.
Okay.
It says 43 on here.
Yeah, I saw it. Yeah.
Well, my sheet says 13 north.
Yeah, I was, oh, yeah.
Okay.
I thought I'd just, okay.
All right, Mr. Calhoun?
Yeah, I'm making a motion to sit for a public hearing.
All right, so motion by Mr. Calhoun to set the public hearing under item number one.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with the like sign. So item number two, Mr. Renee.
Okay, so the next item is a rezoning request for Secretariat Properties LLC on Owen Boone Road. They're seeking to rezone a 44.28 acre parcel from A2 to RE1. That's an aerial view of that property. They're proposing a four-lot residential development. The lots will be 10 acres or larger. Access to the property will be on a private drive. They will have a road maintenance agreement and there will be restrictive covenants stating that no, there can be no further subdividing of the property without the board's approval. They'll have restrictive covenants also that said the minimum heated and cooled square footage is 2,200. These are views of that property and Mr. Eichelberger is here today if y'all have any questions for him.
Mr. Calhoun?
I'm making a motion to sit.
All right, so motion to set the public hearing by Mr. Calhoun, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with the like sign. Hey, you stood up, was all ready to go. Didn't have to say anything. How good is that? All right, item three, Mr. Renee.
Is a county-initiated rezoning request at Highway 49 Bates Road and Myers Road. So we're seeking a zoning change for 11 parcels on Highway 49. The parcels have residential homes on them. They're currently zoned C3, A1, and A2. That's an aerial view of those properties. And then this shows the zoning map. You can see the C3 along the highway. If they have a house in the C3 zone, if something were to happen, they wouldn't be allowed to rebuild. And so we're going to seek a change to A1, which is consistent with surrounding properties in that area.
Okay.
I make a motion.
All right, so motion to set the public hearing by Mr. Morrison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with the like sign. So item number four, Mr. Renee.
The last item is a conditional use permit for Mark Eves on Highway 469 South. Mr. Eves is seeking the conditional use permit to mine approximately four acres of a 53.20 acre parcel. That's an aerial view of the property. The excavated material will be sold for construction projects in the area and the mined area will be reclaimed as a 3.7 acre lake, which will serve as an amenity to the property for future, future possible development. This property is zoned RE1A. They show the area to be mined and their haul road right there. There's a better picture there.
469.
We have concerns over the placement of the haul road because there's a hill and a curve in that area. So we've asked them to go ahead and contact MDOT for a permit. And also, we need a copy of their MDEQ four-acre exempt mining permit, which they have in the works. These are views of that property. And these are surrounding properties.
All right, I make a motion to set the public hearing and at a later time, we can, we can address anything else like common stuff like dust, you know, just the common stuff that comes with, with this, when you've got people living real close to Mark, we always do something. We'll talk about that later, just conditions about like keeping the dust down, stuff like that. Nothing, no more than what you'd want around your own house.
All right, so.
Set the public.
So motion by Mr. Morrison to set the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with the like sign. Anything else under new considerations, Mr. Renee?
No, sir.
All right, so move to item five on your agenda, site plan architectural review. Item number one is van supporting goods.
Correct. At 777 Highway 468, Mr. Allen owns three parcels on Highway 468. The property is zoned C2. That's an aerial view showing the existing store. This is the front elevation. So this is the floor plan. The addition is going on the end of the existing building. This is the existing store. This is the old meat processing area here. Since the new building has been built for meat processing, he's going to renovate this area for retail sales and add the 2,400 square foot addition on the end for retail sales. Okay, and so.
Is that something?
So this is the front elevation. He's going to redo the entire front of the store. It'll have hardboard lap siding, a stone veneer along the bottom, and 12 by 12 wooden posts. It will match the new building.
It looks good.
Okay, so Brad, you want to do a motion approved? Anybody's got comments on it?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, so motion approved, architectural review, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with the like sign. Anything else under site plan review or architectural review? So move to item six, nuisance property hearings. Mr. Slay? I tell you, you didn't even have to get up, Mr. Slay. You can do it from right there if you'd like.
If, if I could you to favorably, Mr. President, we recess out of our planning commission and open our regular board meeting momentarily. We've got one emergency matter that I need to address with the board that has some timing issues on it. So before we get into all this, it's like it's going to be a significant nuisance.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to leave the planning commission.
I'll make a motion to.
Second.
So motion to leave the planning commission temporarily will return by Mr. Calhoun, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed with the like sign. So we'll go into the board supervisor's meeting. Mr. Slay, do we need? You can just handle it.
Yes, we're, we're going to handle it right here with, with just a quick summation as to what this is about.
Okay.
We've got an election coming up next Tuesday. New equipment, election equipment has been provided, ordered, and is inside, onsite now and is ready to be implemented. These are devices that will actually print a ballot at the polling locations for us. So that is, and by the way, that was paid for by your HAVA money. So the Secretary of State that receives the federal Help America Vote Act funds has provided that information. We have secured this equipment for purposes of our elections and we anticipate that this is going to make our election process more efficient using these devices where the ballots can be printed at the polling locations. It makes it really efficient and effective. When we need ballots, we have that capability there. We don't have to wait on someone to distribute or deliver ballots. And so it's an effective process and we're excited to have that. What we did not anticipate was that we would receive the equipment with what are called test cartridges for the print ink. They only print about 150 ballots. We discovered that kind of late in the game when we were doing our, our LNA testing. And so that, that set about this process that we're embarking on now, which is this. I need you to declare a local emergency so that we can order the cartridges that we need from the, from the supplier thereof. We've looked at every supplier that we know of. There are not sufficient cartridges available. And we've got to go to the one supplier we can get them from and get them handled. So I need an emergency declaration based on what I just told you for the purchase of 50 printer cartridges that support our ballot-on-demand printers at $145 each, plus shipping. Total is $8,175. I need your authority to declare the emergency and to cause a purchase order to be effectively tendered to the supplier and let's get them on the way.
Can that be done in one motion?
Yes, please.
All right, so we'll take that one motion to add it to the agenda for the board supervisor's meeting.
I'll make.
So motion by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with the like sign. So motion approved by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Slay, anything else?
Just recess now and go back to planning commission.
So entertain a motion to recess out of the board supervisor's meeting, back into the planning commission meeting.
Go move.
So motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with the like signs. We're back into the planning commission meeting. Mr. Slay, back up at the booth under item six, nuisance properties.
Yes, sir. First item under nuisance considerations, John and Amanda Nels' nuisance property, 109 Hickory Street. This is a District Four property. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask for either Mr. or Ms. Nels or anyone on their behalf to be prepared to come forward. Renee will demonstrate with the photos.
All right, so we received a report or a complaint on March 29th of a dumpster rental business being run on this property. It is an Evergreen Estates. The certified mail was sent and received and Kathy has had some contact with the owner. These pictures were taken April 6th. And then these are the new pictures that were taken yesterday.
Mr. Gaines? I'm sorry, y'all come on up. If you would, just introduce yourself with your name and your address for the record, please.
Amanda Nels, 109 Hickory Street.
Okay.
John Nels.
Okay, perfect. Want you to tell us about it?
Well, when we bought the property a year ago, Polly Pace was a realtor and we asked her to make sure we were okay. And she said, yes. She said, we're okay because what they told us along with, because I even, to make sure, I even went to the John Cockrell's realtor that was selling the property. I even went to him and they said, because this, something about, I don't have to write words sometimes, but something about the property was over 25 years old and everything was like null or something like that. Because there was no HOA, so there was nobody to reinforce stuff. And since the property was 25 years old, that all the like restrictions, yeah, had like ran out. And so that's all we went on. So we thought we were okay. And when we were actually in the process of, you can't see it in this picture, but there's a.
Another two acres to the left of where that dumpster is right there that we're going to clear off and put them all in the back of that.
Do y'all own the dumpsters?
Yes.
So y'all own, that's y'all's business?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so y'all not having the dumpsters there doing a project?
No, sir.
So you don't have you doing honeydews? You need the dumpsters filled up, right?
No.
So y'all own these dumpsters and y'all rent them out, right?
And they're, they're saying we need to get them out of there.
Right, so that's the issue, Mr. Renee?
Yes, it's a zoning violation.
It's a zoning violation. That's, just to clarify, the, Ms. Nels is probably correct that the, that the covenants that were applicable in this subdivision at some time are probably not enforceable anymore, but that's not what this is about. This is a secret, this is totally separate deal. It's local ordinance.
We learned that, yeah.
Right, so under our zoning ordinance, where the property is zoned residential, we don't allow a business to operate. By the way, this is going to be a frequent refrain today. We don't allow businesses to operate in residential areas. So it doesn't matter if there's an HOA, it doesn't matter if there's restrictive covenants. We simply can't operate a business in a residential community. We've got to find somewhere else to do that.
This is our livelihood. There, there, we've learned that there's something that you can get a.
Conditional use.
Some, I don't remember.
Support or privilege?
It's not, it's a, not a privileged thing. It's a.
It's a home-based, home-based business operation. It's, it's not going to work in this situation because the compatibility issues here are just problematic. That type of equipment coming in and out constantly as a part of a business situation, we, we can't allow that in a residential setting like this. There are places where that possibly could work, but this is not going to end up being one of them. You're going to have to find somewhere else to operate your business.
We've been trying to find a place and we've been trying to buy, we've been trying to find a place to lease, anything that we can to get them out of there. I could have moved them yesterday and, but it would have just been for the weekend.
Yeah.
And then I've been out again.
Yeah, I think the board, you know, obviously it's up to the board to decide what it wants to do here. It seems to me that, and an option that could be workable, Steve, would be just to go ahead and declare it a nuisance, but allow some period of time for these folks to be able to locate another spot. That seems reasonable. That way we don't have to come back and it'll give y'all the time that you need to try to figure out what are we going to do to relocate.
60 days.
60 days, which should work. Yes, sir.
And come, stay in contact. I mean, the worst thing is not knowing, just, you know, stay in contact. Hopefully we can get it worked out and it'll be good.
Might educate your realtor too.
Yeah, we did. We actually, we actually called her and she called and spoke to somebody, the officer. I don't know which one it is, but she spoke to the officer right after we, but there's a lot of business ran in Rankin County residential.
Yes, we know.
Yeah.
It's a frequent refrain.
All right, so make a motion by Mr. Gaines to declare the nuisance pending 60 days and to follow up with our office.
Yeah.
All right.
Second.
Second by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with the like sign. Thank you guys for coming in and talking. All right, item number two, Mr. Slay, under nuisance properties.
Did we close that one?
I'm sorry, I may not have closed it.
That's, that's fine. Just making sure it's on the record.
Yep.
Item two is the Lisa Meyer nuisance property, 104 Sandy Hills. Again, a District Four property. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask Ms. Myers or anyone on her behalf to plan to come forward. Renee will demonstrate.
All right, so we received a complaint about someone living in a camper and rubbish and debris on this property. The complaint was on April the 20th and these pictures were taken on April the 20th. These pictures were from yesterday.
What do, what's the contact? I mean, has there been some discussion back and forth or none?
None.
Nobody's here?
Let's just, I, I'd say without any thing to discuss, or we got something to discuss, we just don't have anybody to discuss it with. Let's just go ahead and consider the nuisance and send it up.
Yes, sir.
Then maybe we'll have a discussion after that.
Yes, sir.
So we'll close that public hearing. Mr. Gaines, make some motion to declare nuisance. Second by Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with the like sign. Item three, Mr. Slay.
Mr. Renee, are we doing the Holsman?
Yeah, we skipped down a little bit.
Did I skip?
Well, you didn't.
I must, my stuff must be out of order.
On my sheet, I had, number three was the 129 Poplar Ridge issue.
That is correct.
Item three is the John Holsman nuisance property at 129 Poplar Ridge Drive. This is a District Two property. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if Mr. Holsman or anyone on his behalf is here to step forward. Mr. Renee, you'll demonstrate, please.
All right, so this is in Bridlewood subdivision. We had a complaint September of '21 that an auto repair shop was being run out of his home. I think Kathy had some contact with Mr. Holsman, who removed vehicles from the property for several months. But then on April 29th, we were informed that the vehicles were back and that he was repairing them. The certified mail was delivered. These pictures were taken September the 22nd. And then these are the new pictures that were taken yesterday.
Okay, if you would, sir, just introduce yourself to the board with your name and address, please, sir.
My name is John Holsman at 1, live at 129 Poplar Ridge Drive, Brandon.
Okay, tell me about everything.
I'm retired. I've been since Oseb and retired. I've always been a hobbyist, cars and vehicles and so forth.
Sure.
And I own these vehicles here. I own six of them, all tagged and titled. There's the one that she's going to show a picture of there, the Yukon, with the grill missing out of it. I've built an engine for that and it will be the next couple of months. Hopefully they'll be out of the way. Will be out of the way. I'll be using it actually.
Yeah, so all the.
The first picture there, I will admit, that old dog's truck was, I did that for a friend of mine. They had, insurance had wanted to tow it and he didn't want to tow it. He wanted to keep his truck, so I agreed to do the job for him.
Gotcha.
And I did that. And that was last, September last year. That's been gone. I don't do that kind of work at all anymore. I do work for friends and friends of friends, that type of stuff. Most of the time without, without any kind of compensation.
Yes, sir. And so, so I guess the main issue I'm thinking that came up is running an automotive garage. Not sure it's an automotive garage, but doing work on the inside where cars coming in for working on garage, other than your own personal vehicles. Mr. Renee, if you would, just maybe remind us again what the regulations say in that area for, for his house.
Yeah, you can't run a business and you're not supposed to work on an inoperable vehicle in the open. It should be in an enclosed area if you wanted to work on a vehicle there.
And that's what, that's what our county regulations say, also inside the overlay district where Bridlewood is. So that's the regulations we got to follow. So maybe I could let you tell me a plan or a method that we can kind of proceed from.
Your dog's truck from September, it's been gone for a long time and I'm not doing that stuff anymore. I was having a friend out with that deal. But I don't do the work out in the open. I have a shop to the left here, a nice shop. I built, when I built this house back in 1999.
Yes, sir.
When I need to work, I do. My property or my friend's property, a couple of vehicles, it's done in the shop.
If it's inoperable, it shouldn't be stored out in the open either.
Right, so storing outside, stuff like that, that's what's going to cause us a problem in the future. And I just wanted to be sure you understood what the regulations say and so you kind of know how it'll go from here. So if the offices and all, and I'm Mr. Renee and then we'll follow back up to be sure that we're doing it the way we need to do it, what the regulations say in the county and the overlay district. So if you would just be conscious of those type of things and if you tell me you've got it corrected, then we'll go from here. But in the future, we can't have vehicles outside. We can't run a business. We can't do those type of things in those subdivisions.
I've never run a business, sir.
Yes, sir. All right.
All right, there's an extra layer that needs to be mentioned and that is that there may be restrictive covenants that also apply. We don't enforce restrictive covenants.
That'd be the HOA there.
It's the HOA.
We don't have an HOA in that part of the, of the Bridlewood.
All right.
The HOA is the original part that was built out front and the next two or two segments were built, don't have an HOA. We do have covenants, we do. I've had to use the covenants before because I know we've built a house too close to the property line.
Sure.
So I am aware of.
So I guess the main thing is the vehicles outside and then, you know, you can do work on your own vehicles inside a garage, so.
Only one that meets that criteria is the Yukon with the grill out of it and that'll be next 30 days or so, it won't be that way.
Okay.
He can, he can park his vehicles, like, he can park vehicles outside.
If they're running vehicles.
It's the, it's the inoperable piece that's the issue.
As long as they're running, he can park them outside.
Yes.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we table it and he stay in touch or any problems, talk with Renee's office or they talk with him and.
Yep, so what we'll do, we'll table it for 45 days, you could, we'll follow back up, be sure everything's the way it should, and then we can close it from here. So motion by Mr. Gaines to table this for 45 days. I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with the like sign. Also, we close that public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Holsman, for coming in.
Thank you.
Item number four.
This is Alford. Okay, good. Item four, under the nuisance considerations, the Andrew Alford nuisance property, 109 Lakeland Drive, it's a District One property. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask Mr. Alford or anyone on his behalf to be prepared to come forward. Renee will demonstrate the photos.
All right, so we received a complaint in March of this year about rubbish and debris and inoperable vehicles. This property is located in Cleary Heights. These pictures were taken on March the 16th. These are the new pictures that were taken yesterday. The mail was sent and received.
Good morning.
Is this the.
Good morning, sir.
This the current pictures?
Yes, sir.
You ready for my name?
Yes, sir. Give it to me, your name and your address, please, sir.
Andrew S. Alford, 109 Lakeland.
Okay, great. You want to tell us about it?
Well, I've been living at this property since 1984. And the brown truck on the left is, is a truck my brother drove, who's, who's deceased. He, he worked for MPNL and, and so I have that truck. If, I, I, I will follow up on removing the vehicles as soon as possible and, and, and try to do what I'm supposed to do.
Well, you know, you have to miss kind of what all you're supposed to do.
Sir.
Do you, do you have some, do you know what you're supposed to do? I mean, do you have, have they talked to you about the?
The automobiles, I have, I have two trucks. The brown truck on the left and the, and the truck farther to the right are inoperable and, and I need to remove them.
What about the other stuff? Flash it back, I think.
That's the beginning.
Yeah, come on, I'll pull it a bit closer to the highway.
Well, one, one dilemma I have is my house has no, what came with no garage and I, I just have a house with no cover or, or garage and I'm at the very back of the lot. But I've not built or added on to, to the property, you know, to make a garage. I've got a concrete pad. But I'm, I'm a hunter and I have an ATV and boats for duck hunting and, and deer hunting. And, and those kind of things are, are out where you can see them. And I, I, I don't have a way of just putting them in a garage.
I can't see it in the pictures, but I think there were some more pictures. They showed a bunch of stuff at the, like the front door or something, just like.
Could you get closer?
Yeah, there you go. A lot of this stuff.
Just about, it's my hunting trailer.
Well, just like that, that stuff there.
These are all.
You've got the camper shell, you've just got the stuff. And I think that's where the complaints really came from. It's just, and I'm not identifying things when I say just stuff that looks like you just accumulated, just like other people do and eventually kind of accumulates and piles up and, and. Like the old camper shell and I'm not sure what all is covered up there and then it looks like an old something that looked like wood. accumulates and piles up, and, like the old camper shell, and I'm not sure what all's covered up there, and then it looks like an old something, looked like wood back to the right, back there, it just cleaned up the lot, and it looked like, at one point, I thought it was something right toward the front door, which I can't see it now, I thought I was seeing a picture, but just, that, all that, like right up between your truck and, I don't know what all that stuff is there, but that's where I refer to it, it's just stuff, it's just stuff that just gets, has piled out there over time, it's accumulated, like the, it looks like the pickup you said you're gonna move, that was your brother's, it's like it's full of stuff in the back, and when you say you're gonna eventually move them, I think we need to get a timeline, you know, it's kind of hard for us to go back and say, he said he would eventually move them, we need to have a timeline on when we need to get it done.
These complaints come to us, we don't go, we don't go hunt them.
It's not something, I mean, I don't know-
There are people who live in this vicinity who have said, this is a problem that needs to be dealt with, so we're addressing that, so can you give us a timeline?
So how many weeks are you willing to allow me?
Well, what we're gonna do, I think what we do normally, is we declare the nuisance, and that way you don't have to start this process all over again, we'll clear the nuisance, and that takes a process before, when you clear the nuisance, that means it's gonna go to Justice Court, but that takes a long process, and we'll kind of monitor it before we expedite that, so that'll give you some time, to give you days, no, I don't, I can't tell you, but I mean, probably through the whole thing, at least thirty days.
Yes, sir.
And there again, if you're making progress, we'll be, if our people think you're making progress, then obviously we're gonna work with you.
Okay.
That's fair enough?
Yes, sir, could I make a small comment?
Sure.
Sure. Well, I worked for a self-employed engineer for over twenty years, and I just wanted to mention to you men and the room that I had the privilege of, I drew the plans for the Richland City Hall, the foundation roof frame and structural steel, I worked, it was an engineer that I worked for. I drew the bridge over the Pearl River at Byram, the concrete bridge.
Right, I knew you drew the other one, it's nineteen oh five.
And one other bridge I want to mention is, I drew the plans for the Lake Harbor Extension Bridge over I-55 up near Costco. It took four years for that project, we didn't work on it constantly, but they wanted to add lights, and we, they scrapped that, so it took one thing after another that slowed that project, but I just wanted to mention that I'm privileged to have worked and done numerous projects around the city and in the state.
Right, yeah.
And I just wanted to mention that.
Oh, we appreciate that and everything, and like I say, I think, I don't have any doubts you're gonna work to get this taken care of, and like Mr. Slay said, we don't go out looking for this, this comes to us, it's no different than the police, Sheriff getting a report, he has to, he has to go check it out, so that's the thing, we just ask you that.
Thank you.
As long as you're making some progress, we're gonna work with you, but if it stops, then like I said, it is already on its way to Justice Court, and I know you don't want to deal with that, so.
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you, so we'll close that public hearing, and Mr. Morrison makes a motion, declare the nuisance for thirty days.
No, just declare the nuisance.
Declare the nuisance. So declare the nuisance, so a motion by Mr. Morrison to declare the nuisance, second by-
We're gonna take them in the order that Ms. Renee's got them here, so our next one is gonna be our-
Hang on, I gotta vote, I hadn't voted yet, sorry about that, so I got a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Calhoun, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye, and you pose with a like sign, so now we're going to, which number are you on here?
We're gonna be on six this time, because we're going in the order that Ms. Renee's got them here.
Okay.
So six would be, five is pending, continuation of the Roger and Stephanie Moore nuisance property at 128 Poplar Ridge Drive, this is District Two. We'll open that public hearing, I'll ask for Mr. or Ms. Moore to step forward, or anyone on their behalf, and Renee will demonstrate the photos.
Alright, so we received a complaint on this property originally in September of twenty-one, they were here at the last meeting, and it was just tabled at that time, we were to monitor it, but come back if we received another complaint, we got a complaint that day that they were continuing to run the business there. So these pictures were taken September of twenty-one. And these were taken May nineteenth, twenty-two.
It's that same truck that was at the other house, wasn't it? Same Dodge truck?
Same Dodge truck.
It looks similar, doesn't it?
It did look similar, but it wasn't.
Teal Dodge truck.
That teal, now that's a Chevrolet.
What year, what year truck was that?
That teal Chevrolet truck was at the other house, and it belongs up there, so.
I guess, okay.
So these pictures were taken yesterday.
Alright, so the same thing is, you understand what we're trying to talk about here, can't run a business out of our house, and that's the same thing we-
And we're not, I'd like to see the profit of it.
Yeah, well.
That'd be nice, but.
I can't argue with you, and the same side of that is the inoperable vehicles outside or-
There are none.
And they're all, they're all running dry.
They're all tag, title, and drive.
I just want to be sure everybody's clear, so, well, I wasn't here, I don't think, I think I missed that meeting, so I want to be sure we understand it, and you know, and again, we're not out looking for the same stuff, same thing Mr. Slay, Mr. Morrison said, when calls come in, our office does go out and check, right, so I guess the main thing is, I guess you have some, y'all have some vigilant neighbors around that same side that are trying to-
I'm not sure if vigilant is the right word, but yes.
Yeah, so that, I guess that's where these things come in from, so I'm gonna ask you guys, myself, I wasn't here last meeting, follow what the ordinance says and what our rules say and our regulations say for the county and overlay district in your subdivision.
Yes, sir.
So, because the next time we come back in, we're gonna have to take action, move to Justice Court, let them deal with it, I know you guys will do what we ask you to do, so that's kind of what I expect.
And we've done what I asked us to do last time, and we still got a complaint, so what happened then?
Well, I guess the main thing is, our office is just gonna look at it, and if they see that there's a violation, that's what brings it back to here, they're not just gonna go out there and act on what a complaint is out there, so they'll take the complaint, they'll look at it, and if they see a violation, what's there, that's what brings you back here, so I'm assuming the vehicles that were seen when you went back out there that day triggers back to where we're at, so maybe that was, didn't have time to get it done, maybe you had to get it all settled the way you want it, now, I know we've had thirty days at least, you understand exactly what the regulations say, we're all on the same page from here, so.
And so my next question is, we personally own seven of those vehicles that are in those pictures, what?
As long as they're drivable, and they're in, I believe they're on concrete, isn't that right?
Yes.
They got a lot of place to park there.
Am I okay to work on my own vehicles and friends and stuff in my shop, along with my property?
Yeah, as long as it's indoors, you can't do it like in the driveway.
Right.
Yeah, and I got a lift in there, I like classic cars, I restore them, and my father-in-law give me a fifty-three Chevy, that needs a ton of work, and if somebody comes by, they're gonna think I'm doing it for a lift.
I would say, I would say pull in your garage, go to work.
Yeah, Daniel, if I can add one thing, yeah, so where we, where we're gonna have to react, and where it becomes a little bit problematic, there's two pieces here. It's not just the inoperable vehicles being stored outside, although that is an issue, right?
And we have none.
Right, that's not, that is an issue that we have to look for, the other issue that we have to look for is running a business in a residential area.
And we're not.
Okay, when there is social media that says, bring me your vehicle, and I'll work on it and bring it right here, if there's any of that going on, we have no other choice than to move that forward as a violation of the zoning ordinance, forget inoperable, I'm telling you right now, straight up, work on your own stuff, do it inside the garage, if you can, put the door down.
We've actually ordered a screen, because he has no air inside the shop, we've ordered a screen to put in front of the garage door, so that-
So I want to stress this, work on your own vehicles, do not get on social media and suggest that it's free game to bring vehicles here and I'll work on them for you, it doesn't matter if you profit or not. It doesn't matter, we're not-
Well, that clears it, nobody ever said that.
We're not asking, is this a profitable business, we're asking, does this look like and appear to the public to be a business being operated?
Alright, nobody ever stated it appears.
Which is what gets y'all in here, right?
Right, and we did, and as I told you all before, we did set up a company name when he first got laid off from his job of twenty-two years, but nothing ever came of it, we dissolved it, it is still on Google, but there's, I've marked it as closed, but there's nothing we can do other than mark it as closed.
Right, so obviously, we're gonna be looking for recent social media activity if it's brought to our attention, we're not gonna go out and study this, but if it's brought to us, and they say, here, look, here's from June the second, where they put a post out, just fix this truck, bring me yours and I'll fix it too.
Okay.
That's, we've got to respond to that, so, don't make yourself a target in that respect, I would strongly suggest for some period of time into the distant future, until this all settles down, work only on your own vehicles at this location.
Indoors, yeah, okay, alright, so we'll make a motion, I don't want to make a motion, we'll close that public hearing, thank you all for coming in, so no action was taken on that. I don't need a motion for that, do I, Mr. Slay?
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so now, Janice has got me all out of whack on my numbers, I don't know where we're going.
We're on number seven, Boring Properties LLC.
We skipped Jenkins, is that right?
Yes, sir, that's on hold.
So you're going on number seven, alright.
So this is a continuation, number seven's a continuation of the Boring Properties LLC, Darren Manuel, registered agent, 129 Surghai Lane, District Three. We'll open that public hearing, I'll ask whoever's gonna be representing Boring Properties, or Mr. Manuel, to step forward, and Renee will demonstrate the photos.
Alright, so this property was at the last meeting as well, we had received complaints about dilapidated structures, rubbish, weeds, inoperable vehicles, it's at the Robin Hood Lake subdivision. It was continued today, so these were the original pictures that were taken in November of twenty-one. And these are the new pictures that were taken yesterday.
If you would, just introduce yourself to the board for the record.
My name's Darren Manuel from Boring Properties.
Okay, good morning, what's your address?
This address or my home address?
Your home address.
Three eight-five Robin Hood Trail.
Okay.
In Brandon.
Alright, tell us about it.
We bought the house, well, there used to be a house parked there, we bought the house, and it took us a little while, but we got the house pushed over, all the junk, other than what you see there in that corner is a steel pile, I've had two or three scrap guys supposed to come get it, they haven't yet.
He bought this already.
Looks like you're doing, moving on.
He's going in there and buying property in Robin Hood and cleaning it up and doing a good job in there, and I mean-
Yeah, it looks like you're doing, doing some justice.
We're getting there as time allows, right?
Yeah.
Just continue to do what you're doing, and we're not gonna take any action on it.
Right.
Alright, so you want to table anything, or just close it, or what you want to do?
I mean, I-
Leave it open.
Yeah, we'll just table it and just monitor it for the next thirty days, and I think in thirty days, you can have that rubbish picked up or whatever it was.
I'm glad to see you doing it.
Thank, yeah, thank you for coming in, so a motion by Mr., we'll close that public hearing, motion by Mr. Calhoun to table it for thirty days, second by Mr. Morrison, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye, and you pose with a like sign, thank you. I guess then we're on item number eight.
Number eight, yes, sir, this is a continuation of the Billy and Rebecca Beinman estate nuisance property at 115 Dogwood Branch, District Three. We'll open that public hearing, I'll ask either Mr. or Ms., well, the estate, whoever's representatives of the estate can come forward to address the board. Mr. Renee will demonstrate the photos.
Alright, so this was continued from the last meeting too, tires, rubbish, and debris, these pictures were the original pictures taken January twenty-sixth. And then these were the new pictures that were taken yesterday.
So they did remove the tires, or, so y'all been in contact with them, or, but they got that-
Haven't spoken to them, sent them a letter, that's it.
What did we do on the last go around?
Tabled it.
Or continued it to today, I think Kathy said that pile of limbs there.
I think that was from when they were cutting the trees.
The power line folks have been out there, I rode by there the other day, and I mean, I think that boat's still there, but.
Alright, Mr. Calhoun?
So the trees, I mean, the power line people are gonna come back and clean that up?
Yeah, they've been.
Supposed to be.
Alright, so we'll close that public hearing, Mr. Calhoun, what do you want to do?
Where's that Robin Hood?
Yeah, and there's a lot of worse places out there than that, I'd have just, I mean, they're making some attempt, can we still just monitor? Let's just, I guess, table it again, thirty more days and just-
Or you want to give yourself sixty, or whatever you want to do.
Thirty ought to be that.
Yeah, I mean, thirty would be enough.
Alright, so, motion by Mr. Calhoun to table this action for thirty more days, second by Mr. Morrison, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye, and you pose with a like sign.
The only thing I'll add, obviously, whenever we're dealing with a situation where there's an estate, where we know that the property owner has, is deceased, we have some information in that respect, it puts pressure on the Justice Court to try to get service of process on an individual who can represent, we've got to find out more information about it.
And if they're making some attempt cleaning it up, I'm good with that, I mean, just sitting there growing up.
Alright, Mr. Slay, I would assume we're back to number five.
Number five, yes, sir, this is the Cedric and Kelly Jenkins nuisance property, 136 Ed Span Rhodes District Four property. We'll open that public hearing, I see that one of the property owners is present, we'll ask him to be prepared to step forward. Ms. Renee's gonna demonstrate the photos, a little bit of background, this was before you on March the thirty-first, is our gun range, it's being operated in Steve's district, and we engaged several property owners, adjacent property owners, were here to speak on the matter, and address the board concerning the amount of activity, and the fact that this was being operated as a business in residential section. Some of the information about the gun club itself is displayed here on the photo, there's a fairly significant social media presence for this operation as well, and so we express concern in two different ways, one being the impact on the citizens there in the community, and they addressed the board, and I think there were some elderly people who addressed the board concerning the impact on them, and we, you know, we went through the entire issue that we have about the discharge of firearms in Rankin County, in an unincorporated Rankin County, the limitation that the board has as it relates to a discharge of a weapon, and I'm speaking specifically about your weapons discharge ordinance, the limitation is that it's only effective within a platted subdivision. That is with respect to the ordinance for discharge of weapons only, we don't have authority to regulate the discharge of weapons outside of a platted subdivision in an unincorporated county, that doesn't mean we're without authority to deal with the discharge, the impact of discharge of weapons under our zoning ordinance. It doesn't mean that we don't have authority to regulate business activity in a real estate setting, and I'm sorry, in a residential setting. And so Renee's gonna demonstrate now with some photos what has occurred after your hearing in March the thirty-first.
Alright, well, these pictures were taken on the thirtieth.
Prior to the, prior to the hearing.
Right, and then these were the pictures from yesterday on six-one, the signs have been removed from the property, and then these are things that have been posted since March thirty-first. Firearms class, list the dates of April thirteenth, April nineteenth.
Notice that the live fire is at 136 Ed Span, and that is advertised as a part of a class for which there's a charge. It's listed to start on April the nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Fifty dollars per person.
Yeah.
These are other things that were, we found posted.
So remind me, the last time we were here on this, you can shoot your own firearms.
But can't train or have-
Can't train or have courses or classes, right? Alright, Mr. Jenkins, you here? Good morning, come up if you would, I see you sitting there, I was gonna call you up, let you tell us about it, so just your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Cedric Jenkins, 136 Ed Span Rhodes.
Yes, sir, so tell us about it.
So, that group with St. Dominique's, it's a fifty-five or older group, that class, I spoke with the director of that class before I set it up, it was an in-house class for them, them only, the shooting, I did not print that flyer, she printed, but the shooting portion of it was not per se part of the class, I've done many classes where it's just an educational class about gun shooting, gunfire, and safety, I have always extended invitation for people to come out when they want to, to further practice. Every class I've always done it, including the enhanced concealed carry, I always promote to continue to train with your carry. So, this was not weird. So this, this was not weird for, to invite them out whenever they want to. I even gave them a little card that says St. D's on it, so I'll know that, you know, who, who's actually calling about this. They did come out, and they still, they're still coming out to shoot. They're calling me to shoot. So I invite people out to continue shooting. It was not a part of the class. As of, I mean, if you guys can go back to social media, you'll see that that was a pattern even before the first complaint ever came in, guys.
I don't, I don't know whether it's a charge, the charge to me don't really matter. I think you're gonna have to find a place zoned properly.
So I didn't, I'm sorry, I recently, I wanna say recently, the last month, I've been in contact with Boondocks on Highway 18, One George Raymond. The holdup with that, Boondocks were sold and the new owners had to come in and get all their stuff, their things together. So my contact there was Chad Winkler. He runs the operations there. Chad Winkler has recently told me that they, they have everything in place for outside instructors to utilize their facilities when it comes to, pertains to classes. Even prior to this, the last two and a half years, I've been going to Boondocks. They call me to teach classes every now and then, teach state classes and stuff. So I've, I've always had a good relationship with them, but the prior on, the previous owners didn't allow outside instructors to bring their own people in where the new owners have. We just have to work out the financial situation of that. But Boondocks is the facility that I will be using as far as class, if it's live fire and class that they, that is where I will be.
Okay.
I, I know the guy that is the new owner and he is a good guy and I'm sure that he would work with you well. What I would like to do is instead of us coming in here every month or two, I would like to send it up to Justice and let you plead your case with somebody that can make the decision that's got, whatever we make a decision on here, it's gonna go up there. And we just...
And we steadily gonna get...
We're playing volleyball back and forth. So do you understand what I'm saying?
I totally agree.
Okay. And get that pass out of our backyard. But anyhow, I would, and I don't wanna say his name over here and phone number and stuff, but like, if you want to know a contact, I will give, get you a contact to the owner, new owner.
Chad, Chad Winkler is their like number one guy that runs.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll call Chad after I leave.
All right, well, let's do that. Let's set it...
Close it?
Close, yeah. And let him handle the rest of that.
That'll give you some closure on it.
Okay.
So we'll close it, we'll close that public hearing. Motion by Mr. Gaines to afford the Justice Court for further discussion. So seconded by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All Thursday, aye? Any opposed with a light sign?
Aye.
Thanks for coming in, buddy.
I'll work with Ms. Renee on, on what we need to take care of with respect to the Justice Court matter.
All right, the document I have in front of me, Janice gave me, is just kinda shot right now. There's lines all over it. But is there anything else I missed in nuisance property? Am I good? Ms. Renee?
That is everything.
I've covered everything. All right, so we'll entertain a motion to adjourn for the next meeting on July 1st, 2022. Motion by Mr. Morrison. Second by Mr. Calhoun. Any further discussion? All Thursday, aye? Any opposed with a light sign? So now we'll entertain a motion to open up the Board of Supervisors meeting.
I'm making a motion to go.
First, a motion by Mr. Calhoun to open the Board of Supervisors meeting. Second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All Thursday, aye? Any opposed with a light sign? I've got a long list of names here as far as public comments. And I'll remind everybody, public comments are just for comments and we'll limit it to three minutes. But the first one on the list, Mr. Cockrell, I should show you on the list for public comments.
Let me wait on this.
Hey, good morning.
Hey, good morning. Kyle Cockrell, 1307 Old Fanning Road.
Good morning.
First of all, I'd like to apologize for the last meeting because I really didn't know what was going on and how to do or when to get up and talk or whatever. You know, I'd like to apologize for that. Second of all, I would like for, to have a billboard put on my property. I never did say that I withdraw my application, you know, I thought it was just...
So you still want to go through the process?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I've been contacted before the meeting, you know, by Lamar and all that stuff and for them to put a billboard there. But I just, I just think it's, it'd be in my best interest to go with Busby if y'all see fit, because he's, he's a small guy. He's not big company and everything. And I think we need competition to keep everybody in line and...
So Lamar contacted you to put a billboard on the site that they opposed?
Before.
Oh. All right.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I got a question. I guess it's a great question. If, if he didn't withdraw his application, I mean, I'm thinking back, he didn't actually withdraw it.
Yeah, so what happened was, we were told that he withdrew, he withdrew it and Mr. Cockrell didn't dispute that. He said, "I'm gonna go with what I believe..."
And that, and that was my understanding going into it.
"I'm gonna go with whatever the board wants," right? And so we accepted that as an acknowledgement in that moment that the application was withdrawn. That's how the board treated that, best I can interpret.
And that's, and that's how I interpret it.
So where there are, where we have issues is, number one, we got an application that was withdrawn. If, if Mr. Cockrell intends for that application to be considered, he needs to state clearly to this board that he did not withdraw it, that he wishes to with, to rescind any indication of a withdrawal and to request that the board acknowledge that it's not withdrawn and that it should be placed back on the, the board's docket for activity. That's step one, all right? Step two is, you got a moratorium in place. And if you're going to accept, and again, this is conditioned on him doing what I just said and you accepting that, right? You've got to then indicate that the moratorium was placed on applications that were submitted after the date that you established your moratorium, which would not include Mr. Cockrell's application, because it would precede, it would go back to the date that it was originally filed. And you would be then eligible, you need to acknowledge that so that it's not barred by the moratorium from being acted on. And I would suggest to you that we at least notify the people who were here to speak on the matter, either in favor of or against. We need to notify those folks that the board is going to take that application up and act on it.
I guess, I guess that's kinda where I'm at on this. If you wanna reinstate your application, then I would say we put it back out for public notice, notify everybody again.
That's what he's saying.
Yeah. I'm saying that we notify the people who were here for the original hearing.
Yeah, but I guess what I'm saying is, those people left, making the assumption...
Yes.
That it was a dead issue.
Yes.
If we do it or we come back up, it would be my fault not to do this under some kinda cloak and darkness deal, that we open it back up for public hearing, put the notice back out. I would like to put the notice back out that there's gonna be a hearing on that topic and you wanna discuss it.
The board can certainly do that. I think it would be appropriate not to charge Mr. Cockrell for additional application.
I totally agree on that, yeah.
And that, you know, we, we have his application that is already in place. We would just need to set it up on the docket for the board, notify the folks that were present, that, that there is going to be a public hearing on it and give that date, make sure everybody's aware, give everybody an opportunity to show back up...
Sure.
And address the matter with the board. And the board can consider it at that point.
How soon can we do that?
Well, we're gonna follow Ms. Renee's guidance on that. She's gonna tell me as best she can, on the fly, what she thinks those dates are gonna be. If she tells me it's Friday, July the 1st, I'm going to dispute that and say it's probably Thursday, June the 30th?
I heard. And just for the record, that was my agenda, not Janice's, so you can't blame her for that.
We've already, I've already blamed Janice. I've already blamed Janice. You can't fall on the sword for Janice.
I'm sorry, Janice, I tried.
You can't fall on the sword for Janice. I already got her on the hot seat for it.
Janice, what are you saying? Just fire me.
Renee, did we have time to get it in on the 30th?
Let's try. But we kinda, we kinda did him injustice, I think.
But, but for the same side of that...
No, because it's gotta go before the planning meeting, correct?
No.
No, ma'am.
You've already done that?
We done, we set it.
We're trying to correct the wrong.
All right, so if I'm just gonna set the date for the 30th, it would be fine.
Okay.
But, okay, so...
This is gonna be a courtesy notification to the people who were here for the first publication. And anybody else that wants to come.
So I guess, I guess my question is that, is how are we gonna know the people that were here for the first hearing?
Well, we've got a videotape that we'll review.
That we gonna be able to identify people?
We've got a, I believe we've got a sign-in list that was maintained that day and we'll look back through the...
But usually the sign-in list is people that wanna speak, right?
Usually, yes, sir.
So I guess my, I don't know how in the world we can go back and figure out who all was here to notify those people individually. I don't know how, I don't know what kinda...
Well, the only problem though, I mean, yeah, I see what you're saying, but we really have, I guess in a way, done wrong, done him wrong in that he assumed, he didn't really know and he, and he, he said, he, he never, never said, "I'm withdrawing." "I'm just trying to go along with the board." And he's not, he's saying he was somewhat obviously confused and he's not withdrawing.
And I'll, and I'll take full responsibility for that. I was of the interpretation when we talked that we were gonna delay it, you were gonna pull the application out, that we didn't want any kinda controversy and we'll let it all die down. That was my interpretation for what you told me. So I'll take the full responsibility of saying the application was withdrawn, everything else that was here, that'll be on me, not you. I'll take the full heat for that side of it. But for the same side of that, there is a tremendous amount of people at the reservoir against billboards. So I don't wanna have a public hearing to make it appear that the board did some weird stuff and didn't give a chance for public comment, because there's gonna be a tremendous amount of public comment on that issue. So I don't wanna have it on the agenda not to allow them to be able to speak. I think that's wrong.
Sure.
So if we wanna put it back on there and have the hearing, then let's have it.
Yep.
I would like to include discussing no billboards.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
On this road.
Yes, sir.
No billboards.
Well, we could, that's, that's way down the line.
Well, I'm talking about over two or three-year period as they, if we're going to start picking and using whatever methods under the table or over the table, I don't wanna be a part of it.
Me either. Me either.
But he just said, when he come up to that, makes me cringe that somebody else offered him. Let me put one up.
Well, and either way, I, I wanna be sure everybody had a chance to speak on that hearing side of it.
Yes.
And I was of the impression...
That is not anything against you, Kyle. You understand?
Yes, sir.
I don't like that kinda play.
I don't either.
And, and that's why I spoke to you directly on the issue side of it. So, and that was my interpretation. So if I interpreted what you were telling me, that's on me. It's 100% on me. So I'm all fine allowing not to have to pay another application fee, continuing on, but I do wanna have a hearing and I do want it publicized that we're gonna have it, because if not, it's gonna give the appearance that the board's not having a proper hearing to do it.
Yeah, but other side of that, in his defense, it's gonna draw, you...
It's gonna delay.
It's gonna draw, it's gonna delay, but it's gonna draw way more than what was actually here. It could. And that's not fair to him.
Can we vote today?
Huh?
No, absolutely not. Let me, let me walk you guys through.
We can't rescind the moratorium?
No, sir. Well, yeah, you can rescind the moratorium, but here's the issue that you've got with that. We're not in a public hearing. We haven't given any notice to anybody about a public hearing on a billboard review.
Correct.
I, I, we would get shot out of the saddle on that.
You, sooner it needs to be done, but, and I agree, those, those people should be here, but I don't wanna, it's not fair to you then to give this time where we could fill the lobby and the room with people that weren't even here the first time. And I think that's, I'm afraid that's what would happen, which is not fair to you. You had what was here that day and that's really, it's, it's not fair to allow that to fester and keep growing.
There's still only five decision makers, once we get to that point. That's not any different than what it was gonna be some time ago.
But it'll be all out on the, on the Facebook and social media and a big deal splash about it, which is not fair to him, because he didn't withdraw his application.
It, it was already there. It's already there.
But I know, it'll even be worse now, because he didn't withdraw his application.
Let me suggest that a, we need a process at this point. And clearly, this is far afield from what we typically see in public comment. So y'all be patient with me as I work through what we need to do here. First thing that needs to happen is I, I need a motion to add to the agenda consideration of accepting a rescission of the prior withdrawal of the application. I need an agenda item that adds that, consideration of Mr. Cockrell's rescission of his prior withdrawal of the application.
When?
That's number one.
When?
Right now. You're gonna do that right now, okay?
Give us all this stuff that's gonna...
That's the first thing that gets added. The second thing is, consideration, assuming that the board allows and acknowledges the rescission, which I expect it to do, then we need an acknowledgement that his application was pending before you established your moratorium.
Correct.
And then I need action to reset the public hearing on Mr. Cockrell's application for a date certain. And y'all need to decide, is it gonna be start it all over again, but don't make him do, pay an application fee? Or is it gonna be just set the public hearing for a date certain?
My, my opinion would be just set the public hearing, without no kinda fee or anything like that. As I said, that, that's on me. That was my interpretation of what he said. So I'm fine of doing that. I just wanna be sure that we give ample time that anybody who wants to speak in opposition or anybody who wants to speak for it can do those type of things.
We'll do what we can to get as much public notice out about the reset hearing date, if that's the board, if that's what the board wants to do, then that's how we're gonna handle it and we'll get notice out.
The only thing we really can do...
So when can we say, "For"? I mean, I don't see why you can't do it on the 30th.
June 30th.
June 30th.
June 30th.
We need a motion for that?
Motion for those three items to be added.
I'm making a motion for those three items to be added to the agenda.
Alright, so a motion by Mr. Bishop saying those three items, second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. And you pose a like sign. So you've got those three items. Hit 'em again one more time.
Me and Ms. Jessica are gonna work hard on, on making sure we got that right.
Alright, so hammer that one more time. What's the three items are?
You, you are, uh, you're allowing Mr. Cockrell to rescind his prior withdrawal of his application for the conditional use.
That's number one.
Number one. Number two, uh, you are acknowledging that Mr. Cockrell's application was pending before your moratorium.
Okay.
Number three, you are resetting the public hearing on Mr. Cockrell's conditional use application for June 30th at nine o'clock in this room.
Alright, and there's no additional fee charged to Mr. Cockrell on the thing? That needs to be in that part of that deal?
Yes, sir.
Okay?
That's, that's the best way. I, I mean, if that's the way we have to do it, do it, I, I think it's, we did. We missed, we misled it or we misunderstood or whatever. So now we can kind of correct what wrong was.
So we'll deal with it on 30th. I make motion to approve those three items.
I second.
Alright, so a motion to approve those three items by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. And you pose a like sign.
You okay with that, Kyle?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I mean, we can't vote on it today. I mean, that's fine. The 30th is fine with me.
Okay.
True.
But I don't, only the question I got is the people that was here, so what I'm saying, they can't call a bunch of people and beat 'em here and all that.
It's gonna be open for the public.
Oh, it'll be, it'll be a full throttle thing.
Yeah, yeah. That's the only, that's the only part I don't like is, is gonna sit there and fester.
But, I mean, I don't understand why you don't like it. I mean, that's public comment set up for it and they were.
Because he already had it. We messed up on the first shot.
Yeah, but I guess what I'm saying is you had a full entourage of that. I've got over a hundred emails I'm gonna forward to you guys over the, that's with you. So my point is I don't wanna do anything that makes it.
I didn't say I'm doing. I'm just saying we messed up by not going, dealing with it then. We, we should have, you should have stepped up and been a little more clear. I agree. You never, it never came out of your mouth, I'm, I'm withdrawing. You were sitting there listening. And, uh, in fact, I didn't even, couldn't even see you because I can't see anybody standing right, that's sitting right behind you where you're standing right now. I can't see anybody in that chair. So I didn't even know you were in the room, but when you stood up, you clearly didn't say, I'm withdrawing my application. So I, I agree.
But I guess what I'm saying is I don't wanna limit public comment on an issue that should be limited.
But it's just gonna be a double dipper that ain't fair to him.
I mean, I, I see your thoughts, I guess. Alright, Ms. Cockrell, anything else? Okay, thank you so much.
Appreciate you coming back.
Appreciate it.
Next one, I'm going through here to try to figure out other comments. Hang on, Steve, come in.
And she's still trying to go to the bathroom.
Give me, give me a wait till you get back.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Because for the same side of that, we've got, I'm going down my line right here. Marty Elrod to speak from Lamar Advertising. Is he here?
I just signed up for the meeting. I, I did.
Oh, you didn't sign up to speak?
Oh, please.
I got you. So alright, so, uh, Jim Defoe?
He good.
See President?
Yeah, I think.
Just signing in there. This is the folks here for.
Okay, from the TIF side, so.
Oh.
I didn't know, I didn't want you to miss any type of things on that stuff. Anyone else needs to speak in public comment? I've got a long list of names here, so I'm not sure if they're on, I know what.
I've got a bunch of them.
That's what I'm saying. I don't wanna miss anybody.
No, those are mostly.
We got.
He wasn't, right? Cause he's on billboards. But he didn't wanna speak. Okay, okay. Pardon, yeah, thank you. Alright, so nothing else in our public comments, Mr. Slade, go to item number six. Your information. I think I'm on six, yeah.
Uh, if, Mr. President, if you'll allow me to skip item A while, uh, our friends from CNPDD get hooked up on their technology, we'll go ahead and handle item B and item C. Uh, we'll take B first. This is a public hearing to receive comments on proposed issuance of tax increment bonds to support constructions of Orleans Way Improvement Project. This is located in the city of Brandon pursuant to a tax increment financing plan and development agreement that was previously identified and published. We are also acknowledging that all of the requirements for public notice have been met. It's actually a repeat. Um, and we have everything lined up correctly this time. I'll open that public hearing and I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak against or in favor of the proposed issuance of tax increment bonds to support construction of the Orleans Way Project. Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Defoe, how you feel about billboards? You wanna comment on that? You just leave that, leave the comment one. Mr. Defoe has no comment on billboards, let the record reflect. I will close that public hearing, Mr. President. At this time, we'll move to item C.
Okay.
And so the minutes will reflect that we conducted the public hearing and that no one showed up to speak in opposition. Item C is a consideration of and potential action to adopt a resolution approving the adoption and implementation of the tax increment financing plan for, for Orleans Way, city of Brandon. This is, you've already done this once.
Okay.
We just need to have a motion on that.
And I'll make a motion to approve.
Alright, so a motion to approve item C by Mr. Calhoun, second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion?
Yeah, so the mayor Pearl does have questions. Uh, he was curious about the, uh, the location in Pearl. Was that also gonna be TIF?
Yeah, so Jay, uh, how that works is that the developer, uh, at some point will step forward with a proposed TIF district that includes the property that Mayor Wyndham is, is anxious to know more about. And so we're kind of at the mercy of the owner of the property, the developer to step forward and say, we do anticipate that there will be potentially a TIF district in the areas that would include property inside the city of Pearl and that we would like to at least approach both the city of Pearl and the county about participating in a TIF arrangement. At this point, the TIF district as defined is located all within the city of Brandon.
So they still own more property. Why didn't John I do all of it?
Uh, I'm Chrissy Ann Sugg, who's a person associate. One reason why we didn't go ahead and do all the property is because um, they're still working out things with the city of Pearl about the road and the city of Brandon about the road. And we do have development that we wanna have go ahead and move forward. It's all within the city of Brandon right now. So when, when we have more finalized plans for the other portion, we do anticipate coming back and making a request to the county to participate in a similar incentive to help extend the road.
Well, so the, the issue though is we have a policy and it has to be a certain limit met on development and there won't be that number, I don't imagine.
Well, we have a hundred and twenty acres left, is that correct?
Hundred and thirty-three.
Hundred and thirty-three acres, which is a substantial development. So I do anticipate that.
And this is ninety-one acres in the city, I'd think.
Yes, sir. I do anticipate. Now, that's without me doing, knowing about wetlands delineation and things like that. Um, but I, I do anticipate, we will return and ask for consideration from the board for the balance of the project. This is a substantial project for the county and both municipality.
Okay.
There'll be a conversation later today.
Okay.
And we spoke with the mayor, met with the mayor yesterday.
I know. He called me afterwards and he regretted not bringing it up more forcefully during the conversation that he would really like to see the TIF included in Pearl currently. So I'm sure he'll relate that to you when you speak today.
If I could say one more thing, you know, the TIF plan lays out a general plan and sets parameters for TIF bonds and it's, it's a, the potential for a project. And we'd like to have things a little more formative before we approach municipality. And now that aspects are moving forward with, on the Pearl side, we are quickly approaching that. But at the time we approached it, all we were not there yet, so.
I had something, but if I, well, I, I think we just need to go ahead and vote on this and then, then I have a quick follow-up that I wanted to address.
Okay. Anything else on discussion?
I did the motion.
Alright, yeah, we've got that. We're in discussion. So all in favor, say aye. And you pose a like sign.
Yeah, so, um, as, as you guys, this is a, a, a really good spot. Just go ahead and insert this here, uh, because we want folks, uh, our citizens out in the public to know, uh, about good news when we, when we have it to share. And, uh, so we were recently notified uh, that the county's, uh, grant application under the Consolidated Rail Infrastructure and Safety Improvements Act, it's called CHRISI, uh, that our grant request has now been awarded. Um, and so we're excited to share that news. Uh, that is another impact, uh, for, uh, the purposes of helping us get uh, the extension of East Metro Parkway, what we call the I-20 connector loop across the railroad track at KCS there at Greenfield Road. And so yesterday we, we had some strategic discussions with, with some of our mayors, uh, about the county's good news and that our, you know, our ongoing efforts to try to make sure we get as much funding for that project as we can possibly find. And so it's in the context of that, Jay, that we, that we discuss specifically the Orleans Way project because it will be impacted by our work on the East Metro Access Extension. Uh, that development stands to benefit from these improvements in traffic flow that we're all anticipating. We've been knowing for years that this part of the project was gonna be a pretty heavy lift early, ca, early on. Um, back at the point in time when discussions about Highway eighteen, as it was constructed as a two lane, back when that happened, the KCS said, we will give you a permit for a grade crossing with two lanes coming across us, but you will not get a four lane grade crossing. Forget it. So we've known for decades now that we had to figure out a plan to get us over that railroad. That's going to impact traffic flow in a number of different ways. And Orleans Way is the type of development activity that's gonna benefit greatly from that improved traffic pattern. So we, we have and are working now to craft, um, some more strategic, long, long range plans as it relates to what we will refer to as a transportation network that benefits from this activity that we have, which is two federally authorized projects that we can take advantage of. The good part about having had success now with CHRISI is that we have other rail crossings across Rankin County that we have to now work to address within the same context. There's no reason now why we should not be working on other applications to access these kinds of funds to help us with other very important rail crossings.
Absolutely.
That's probably one of the best things that came out of this. We now know a way to successfully secure that fund, those funds. Okay? So that's why it's good news for everybody. It's not just one area. It's not just one, um, location. This is something that's gonna benefit the entire county. And it's, uh, it's been in the works now for thirty years and it's exciting to see the traction that we're getting now from multiple sources, multiple. So again, thank you. I've already told you once, I'm telling you again, thank you for, um, for, uh, expressing faith in what looks like a mysterious and lengthy and a process that promotes a lot of impatience. Thank you for giving us a little bit of patience to get us to this point. We have good traction and we're working it as hard as we can work it. And, uh, our hope is that everybody else around here will figure out as well that they need to come be a part of a really good thing. So, uh, that's, that's all I need to say about that. Item A.
Alright, Mr. Slade, hang on. Since we've been going curveballs all day, I wanna do one little thing different. I've gotta be at a meeting at noon in Vicksburg, so I need to make one adjustment. If the board has any issues, I wanna ask is, under item seven, under Mr. Hicks, there's an issue on discussion and potential action to a bond project list. I'd like to move that to Monday's agenda for two reasons. One, I won't be here. Second, uh, I'd like Mr. Parker to be here on that situation. I don't see him here today. Does anyone here on the board have an issue on moving the bond stuff to Monday's agenda? Okay, Katie, Drew, Brad?
I'm good.
Mr. Hicks will move that to Monday's agenda. Everything else I see on the agenda, Andrew Chapel, which.
Makes my heart hurt like yours.
That's coming. And then the discussion here, and I'll follow back up with Gray and him to follow up on this. So if that's okay, Mr. Calhoun?
I'm good.
I'm gonna let you have it and go back to that.
Alright. Item A is a discussion of zoning and planning considerations that are related to the Mississippi Medical Cannabis Act. Uh, we have with us today, Dave Wade and Gray Utes from CNPDD. I was looking to see if you got all the paperwork ready to go now. So gentlemen, as you know, um, effective May three, twenty twenty-two, uh, unincorporated Rankin County uh, is accessible under the Medical Cannabis Act. And so the purpose of this discussion is to begin, begin a process of reviewing the zoning and planning considerations that may be appropriate for this board to consider in relation to this new law. And so Dave and Gray have prepared for you some maps that will help to demonstrate elements of the new law and how it's impacted by your zoning and planning and where, uh, it is likely or possible that various, uh, component parts of the medical cannabis program, whether that be production or processing or testing or dispensing, those four primary elements of the program. There's also some disposal and some other things that are not, it's gonna be quite as significant, but uh, those pri, four primary areas or components of the law, uh, and how, how your zoning and planning implicates those potential uses. That's what this discussion will be about. So I'll turn it over to Gray and Dave. Thanks, sir.
Alright. As we started, um, at the last meeting, just going over briefly what you can regulate and how you can regulate it from a zoning standpoint. Um, just wanna start back there where we can look at each of the different establishments and what zoning regulations, uh, state code sets forth or guidance is provided through the code section and, um, what is allowed through that. So we have set forth for, um, dispensary research and testing. State code says that it shall be allowed in a commercial zone. You can use conditional uses, um, and it, the guidance we have been given from associations and, and other areas is, um, those should be treated very similar to similar operations and establishments. Research and testing are not open to the public. Um, you would be a researcher or a, a producer that is providing your product for testing to make sure it is of, um, right potency and, and chemical makeup to be sold to the, to the cardholders. Um, so those are more kind of an office type setting, um, not general public. Your dispensary is open um, to cardholders. It has lots of security associated with it. Um, you can only access it if you have a card. There's some discussion if that would be a swipe card from the outside or if you enter a secured lobby who then allows you into the dispensary, into the product area. Um, but those, in a sense, can be considered more similar to a liquor store where, you know, it's regulated, a purchase is only twenty-one and up, those type of things, um, for a dispensary. So we have, uh, just in some basic conversations, suggested something to consider is in C-three is a conditional use for dispensary research and testing. Uh, for cultivation and processing, disposal and transportation, cultivation and processing, state code tells us, um, they should be allowed in ag and industrial zones, but you may also use them, um, or allow them in some settings and commercial zones. Everything grow facility wise cultivation has to be enclosed. There are no, these are not row crops. Uh, these will be in a fully secured, enclosed structure. Um, a large facility is gonna require significant power. Um, it's also gonna require significant water, uh, resource available for that growing operation. So those are things to keep in mind for that reason. Um, even though it could be allowed anywhere in an ag zone, um, you do have power limitations and where that power is available may dictate where those places, uh, where cultivation and processing could be allowed. Same thing with processing. You're gonna have water, uh, wastewater, um, again, inside, secured. So that may be more of an industrial nature, um, versus agriculture because your agricultural areas aren't gonna have, um, public wastewater, but they will have onsite wastewater depending on the size of the property. Um, but also, as, as you are aware, our, um, public water systems, our, our, um, rural water associations may not be able to provide adequate water supply, um, especially in a sense of fire suppression um, to support the size of those facilities. So we're suggesting, um, processing in an I-one district is a, uh, conditional use and same with disposal and transportation facilities. And then allowing cultivation in, um, A-one and A-two and I-one, but all as, um, conditional uses as well.
Most, most of your cultivation's going in, in, I guess process is gonna be done in the same building.
And that is something to keep in mind. Uh, many of these facilities are joint facilities. They can be combined. They have separate permitting requirements and, and the state is gonna regulate those from that sense, but you may end up with a cultivator and a processor in the same facility. They also, it is allowed that you could have a dispensary associated with those as well. So that's where some of this, the regulations will come into play. On a local level is how do you allow those? And there is a classification for a micro cultivator and a micro processor based on the size. Um, so just all things to think about and to process here, i- as you're thinking about it. Uh, what we have developed, and we have these in a print form as well, but we've gone through and to the best of our ability, uh, based on local knowledge, existing land use we've just recently completed for you, um, all sorts of tax records and data. We have protected properties. Schools, churches and daycares are considered protected. So no establishment, medical cannabis establishment can be located within a thousand feet of the nearest property line of a protected entity unless a waiver is granted from that entity and then it goes to five hundred. So you see two sets of buffers. You see a thousand foot buffer and you see a five hundred foot buffer on the property lines of those protected properties. And the reason we did this is so you can look and, we're looking at, um, up on forty-three. Steve, up in your area, um, where forty-three and twenty-five come together, we have C-two, um, commercial in that area and you can see where the protected properties would be where, um, a dispensary or a cultivator, um, processor in that, in, or the cultivating side, if you follow these recommendations, um, could be located or could not be located if you wanna look at it that way.
You're saying red is where you could locate one?
Well, it, that's C-two. So if we move to a C-three.
They're saying if we only did C-three.
Let, and let me, let me jump over here. Yeah, and I'll show you. We can do some filtering of this. So I can turn on, um, these are just the C-three areas in the county. Um, they're the purple and you can see, you know, in each district, um, let me go back up. So there's none up at that intersection that we were just looking at. Um, if you come back down, you're gonna have some here at Holly Bush, uh, right along, uh, four seventy-one between Baker and twenty-five. So you can explore, you can turn, um, some of these protected areas off. So that's kind of a general idea of, of what's there. You know, we can go through each of these and look at them. We can send you the link to this. I can get you paper maps. I can get you paper maps.
Say, I want, can you send me the link to?
Absolutely, absolutely. And there's a couple of filters that you can turn on and off, so you can just turn on your A1 zoning, or your A1 and A2, so your ag zones. And you can look and see how much land is available under that. You can just look at your commercial. If you want to consider allowing it in a different commercial district, I went ahead and put all of your commercial zones in that filter, and you can use that. So your filter tool, if you see on the right side, from the right, you see print, and then the next button looks like a target, that's your buffer zones that you can filter on and off. And then the, the next one over is your zoning districts.
So the, the important piece of the puzzle here, I think, Gray, correct me if I'm wrong, is gonna be on page two, it says zoning regulations to consider.
Yes.
So guys, that, that right there is the highlight from the discussion. Those are, I would say that these are gonna be the staff's recommendation for your initial consideration about how to set your zoning.
Well, if we were to go with a C2, could we not also require the building to be specific size, parking lot to be a specific size?
Yes. So code, and the reason I keep referencing code is there is some guidance that isn't normally in code section related to business uses. In this one in particular, it does say you can regulate time, place, and manner. It does highlight that, so you're absolutely welcome under general regulations or as part of your conditional uses to regulate things like size, times of operation.
Two-story building, only a one-story building, you know. Well, I think we said C2 if it was the right spot, then C2, you know. But all of it's gonna be more rule, so we don't have that caveat at the end.
Yeah, I, I wanna make it clear to you. We felt strongly, and I don't, I don't wanna put words in Renee's mouth, but we, when we had our initial discussions with Gray and Dave, we made it clear, we want everything to be a conditional use, everything. So we, we arrived at C3 as a conditional use specifically because we know that that is a traffic volume that can handle any of these uses. That's what C3 is, major thoroughfare, highway, commercial. We, we treat C3 as our heavy traffic volume use, okay? C2 is a commercial application with a lower traffic impact. That's the primary.
Well, I think the C3 is outdoor storage, that's what I see as C3.
But it's actually a conditional use in C3 even at that. So we, we, we already regulate fairly aggressively in our commercial zones for most applications. This is not gonna feel a lot different than we normally, how we normally do it. I think you guys need to get on the same page about whether or not C2 needs to be on the table, okay? But right now, those would be for, look at what it would be for. It would be for any of the dispensaries, if they're standalone dispensaries, they will work in a C3 as a conditional use. If it's research, they go in a C3, it's a conditional use. Probably won't be a lot of conditions with that. And then, of course, testing is gonna fit. But those are your three component parts. Notice, production's not in there. So if, if you've got a user that wants to have a production and a dispensary, they're not going in C3 because you can't have production in C3. Are you following that? So you're limiting on your C3 right now. The, the recommendation is limit that to dispensary, testing, research. Make them conditional use. So if you're gonna do a dispensary, and to Jay's point, you feel like there may be some places in C2 where it would work, we would just suggest that you be careful about that because there may be a whole lot more other C2-zoned areas where it is completely inappropriate, and you're gonna find yourself in a situation where you're getting leaned on constantly to let it go just so you could have that one unicorn C2 spot that would work. So we're gonna have to, basically, we're gonna have to make a rule and then just kinda plan to stick with it.
Also, I don't see why we couldn't put the processing disposal and transportation. Why not just put that in agriculture also?
I don't know what transportation, I mean, transportation's, you transport it throughout the state. I mean, is that what you?
Transportation as defined is a private entity that transports the product from the cultivator to the processor.
Or to the dispensary.
To the dispensary, or to the testing facilities. You know, what, what do those look like?
We don't know.
I don't know.
Well, I'll find out.
What size is the fleet, what size is the vehicle? Those are, those are things that we don't know at this point. You haven't seen one. Not sure, you may have a better idea of what those facilities look like, what a transportation company is. Yeah, I mean, is it, is it an armored truck? Not really sure. So that's why currently it's listed at I-1. If there is, once there is more local knowledge on these things, then maybe it's a consideration of, of looking at that elsewhere.
Could we take a field trip to the number one grand state and the union and see what theirs looked like?
Yes, sir. Wait, is that Colorado?
I don't know, I don't know. I, I know it's not Oklahoma from everything I've heard. I mean, the people that come in here, the one state that they brought, when they're going toward the negative stuff, everyone knows Oklahoma.
Yep.
So I, I doubt it'd be Oklahoma.
Right. One challenge that we have is to understand exactly how does Mississippi's law relate to, say, Colorado's law? But of course, keep in mind, in Colorado, you've got recreational. So there, there are significant differences right now in the way that the law is structured. You would need to be careful to make sure you were talking about and reviewing situations that are medical cannabis regulations.
Gray, can y'all look at that and see what is close to Mississippi? And it might help us.
It may be Arkansas, it may be Arkansas.
Maybe, yeah, okay. See, I didn't know Arkansas was one of those.
Arkansas's got a medical law, but I don't, don't hold me to that, I think I'm right.
Louisiana's a medical too.
So what I want you guys to, to be thinking about, where we really need your help, is, is on the, the zoning piece. What, what zones do we wanna focus on for each of the uses? This is your staff's initial first reaction in conjunction with CNPDD about how to begin structuring this. I think some care and thought has gone into these recommendations, but that doesn't mean we've cornered the market on the wisdom on this. We're all learning as we go, so we do need your thoughts, we do need your help.
So the only thing I heard about as far as the, the processing disposal and transportation was in I-1 was about the water.
Water, power, disposal, what, what is the disposal process gonna be? You know, processing is a manufacturing process. We don't allow that in commercial otherwise, it's usually a retail, like storefront, so that.
I think all that could be accomplished in ag if everything lines up, if they get the power they need or water they need.
I don't know about that, man, that'd open up. I see what you're saying, that may be hard to get that amount of power.
I mean, it's gonna be up to the location, no matter what.
Disposal part of it's gonna be minimal because a lot of these processors are going into, you're not gonna have a lot of waste because they can mix it back in with a different batch and reduce the THC in it. If it's over 30%, when they have it tested, they can mix it back in to lower that down to get it within regulation.
What do they do with all the?
I mean, they process it, I mean, they extract all, all, everything out of it.
They use every piece of it?
Yes, sir.
But I mean, they don't, they don't, they just have like some, I don't wanna say saw rest, but.
Can I?
Like, like ground up leaves.
When they done with it, it's powder, it's pretty much gone.
Jay, one of the thoughts behind the I-1 restriction on some of these others. Number one, we're trying to be as protective as we can, try not to have any unintended consequences, that's number one. If you, if you put them in A1 even as a conditional use, you are necessarily gonna have some property use conflicts, you're gonna have residential. Keep in mind, we allow residential in ag.
Right.
And so the concern obviously is just opening the waterfront on ag as if you've got a big cultivation outfit in close proximity to residential, you're gonna have those neighborhood conflict issues. There's gonna be a smell, there's gonna be noise, there's gonna be all of that activity that's typically associated with it. It's not gonna be, you know, it, since it's, you know, like in an A1 situation, we, we could probably get away with saying, hey, it's a conditional use in A2. It's A2, I mean, you can have hog farm. I'm talking about you can have a significant hog farm, big chicken houses.
We don't have a lot of areas that's zoned industrial.
That's correct.
And I mean, something I think's in the bill, I mean, all that, the odor is being filtered. They got it filtered through a process, so when it leaves that building, you're not smelling.
I don't think we need a hell of a lot of places to put this stuff.
I don't either.
Yeah, we don't need one on every corner.
I mean, it's up to us to approve.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, but the only problem though, like Steve's saying, I mean, I'm just looking down the road. If you, if you leave it where it's open, sure, it's our place to approve them, but then it's like, who do you tell no to, and why you tell a no to?
So if you got a farmer that, that decides he wants to get into the business, and he wants to throw him up a metal building and grow some, you gonna tell him no, he's gotta move to industrial zone to do it?
No, I don't think we're gonna have to tell him no. I think State Department of Health is gonna tell him no. I think that's what's gonna happen, because he's gonna go look at that permit price. He's gonna look at the requirements to establish the processing facility and structure. So much of this is gonna be beyond this board. The, the regulation piece of this is very limited when it comes to this board. Where can you go and under what conditions? The whole rest of it, Jay, is State Department of Health.
Yeah, so where do we have industrial that's in the county?
So really, we're only talking about, Jay, processing, disposal, and transportation because we let cultivation in A1 and A2.
Oh, you did?
Yes, sir, see that? Cultivation in, cultivation's in A1, A2 as a conditional use and in I-1 as a conditional use. So you're, you're really only talking about processing, disposal, and transportation.
But I'm thinking whoever grows it, they probably want to process it too. I thought they do it all inside of a building.
All of them will be enclosed, the processing and.
Move one here yet, but so where do we have industrial area?
It's gonna be over at Romantic Adventures, right, Renee?
Oh, well, that's neat. Where's that, Renee?
Where's that at?
Where, where, where is that? Renee, where is that place, where's that place?
Janice says she knows where it's at.
Well, that's a different one, you get.
So you've got, you're very little.
Do we have any that's in the unincorporated areas?
The largest piece is right here outside of, that's your, outside of Pilahatchee is your largest piece. And I think that just became.
Well, that's where we have our juvenile facility, isn't it?
No, this is on the east side of the city.
I think that's right there, it rose along between 80 and 20.
That, that's that wetlands that runs between 80 and the interstate, South Pilahatchee Creek. It's real swampy. Then there's some others, up 20, there's a little bit up 25. That's part, yes, yes, it's part of the mega site.
Y'all rezoned that, well, 10 years ago. Oh, it's, it's defunct. You don't, can't get rail access to it, but, but y'all, we rezoned that. I wanted to ask a request right first, an entergy, an NDA as a part of a site visit.
So where else do we have?
Oh, there is some up 25, down L.
25.
There's a little bit right here at Stoll. Now, this is just I-1.
And also out on East Business Park, that's I.
What about on 49 or between 49 Pearl, is the thing on 49?
Well, that's incorporated, that's incorporated.
Yeah, we, we don't need to worry about what's inside the city.
Well, I mean, I'm looking at it, the part that's outside, like going toward a central pipe, over toward Pearl kinda. I don't think that's in either one.
So you've got. This is, that's special use.
I would like to have a day of Dave and Gray putting stuff together, I mean, have it. And we informally sit down and not.
It might be helpful for y'all to each look at your districts.
Yeah, and look, yeah, district by district.
We, we have that, we have those printed, or they're already produced. We would just have to print those paper maps for you to be able to sit down. It's zoomed in on your district with the buffers, with the zoning, so you can take a look at it from that perspective. There was, oh, a point to remember is we are under contract with you on your comprehensive plan and zoning. This is something that we wanna go ahead and get ahead of because you, applications are gonna be starting, facilities are gonna be trying to set up. So you want, this is a decision that we wanna make before we get through the comprehensive planning process. But during that process, we certainly can look at, as was just shown, maybe the need for additional industrial property in the unincorporated county. So just keep that in mind, that we are working on that. So if we highlight a need for additional areas, we can take a look during that comprehensive planning process and comprehensive rezoning effort that will be ongoing. But that said, these regulations, specific to those, the staff recommendations that we've presented today, I would encourage you, because this is gonna start coming, you are gonna start getting requests for it because the permitting process is, is starting in the state. So you are gonna wanna get ahead of that.
As soon as we can get feedback from y'all about the recommendations, we, we need that. If it looks like we need to go ahead and anticipate that we're gonna allow some things in C2, try to get us word as soon as we can so we can begin developing the wording to put into your zoning ordinance and, you know, start developing the conditions that y'all are gonna wanna see.
Can two of us at a time meet with you and Dave or Gray?
Yes, sir.
And get more.
Yes, sir.
Delta districts and.
Yes, sir, one at a time. If two of you need to come together, that's perfectly fine.
I know we can't do more than two, but I would like that because I, I'd rather slow down and get it right.
Yeah, because you gotta look down.
We have some time. We have some time.
They just started yesterday on issuing licenses, and I mean, they, they don't even have practitioners or doctors right now qualified yet to go through their eight hours.
I was watching the news last night, and it was, it seemed like a very knowledgeable lady that's local that Mike could come and answer some questions too, she was on the news.
Wouldn't take just one invitation from somebody.
Well, I didn't catch your name, but she answered some questions.
Cleaner time or two.
We're, we're happy to sit down. I can go straight back and ask them to print those maps if y'all wanna swing by our office.
I may, but I, I still don't know what I'm looking at unless you're, one of y'all are pointing at it.
But we're, we're available if, I may be speaking for you, but I'm available this afternoon, I don't think Dave is actually. But I'm available this afternoon, we'll be at the office if you wanna stop him.
Best just give you a call.
Yeah, just, just give, give me a call, I'll be there this afternoon, I'll be there tomorrow.
Will it be able to, will you have it like, I mean, drawn where you got your colors that identify the different places, different things like I, ag and different ones, kinda like you have, but something that you can pull up our district and see.
She'll be able to filter.
Yeah.
Yep, yep, we can have all that, I've got them, got them ready to go, so if you wanna take it with you too.
There's no getting around the little bubbles, the buffers, there's no getting around that. That's embedded in the state law. You don't get to decide whether it's too close or not.
She said that they could sign off on it.
Well, it only impacts whether it's 1,000 feet or 500 feet. The absolute minimum is gonna be 500, even with a waiver.
16-section property, I've had that question asked, does that apply? Does that apply to sixteenth section school property?
It says schools. It does not get into sixteenth section, it does not go any further than a school. Same thing with church. Is it just the sanctuary? Is it the parsonage? Is it a cemetery that's owned by the church? You know, that, that part, right, that, that part of it's a, a bit vague. So what we did is any church facility that's obviously part of the church, so it may be a, a gymnasium or, you know, a building that has multiple, a church that has multiple properties. We included all of that area. We did not section out sixteenth section, simply because the use of that property can be so many different things. Yet, this does not include home daycares. Those are gonna be in residential areas unless it feeds over into a commercial area that buffers and leads over to it. It, it's really not gonna apply. So that was, that's kind of the data, the information that, that we have waiting for some interpretation on, on what is a church property and that sort of thing.
All right.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. I do wanna say thank you to them because they have been very, very helpful and available to us, and I encourage you to take advantage of that. I've got one item under additional business.
I guess we're, we skipped around so much, I, so I guess we're at sun and on, be reviewed agenda, sun agenda for June 6.
I was talking to Jay when you were saying, we hadn't skipped the Andrew Chapel.
I know, we're on.
No, we're under additional.
Additional business.
All right. We just reviewing the agenda, is there any questions on that?
I've got one additional item as well.
Okay.
Ask Mike after you're ready.
All right, so let's move on to number eight, additional business to be discussed. Mike Harrison.
I'd like to do a pay request for Andrew Chapel of three hundred and twelve thousand, one oh eight, point forty-two. Authorized issue of check for the site master.
I, I make a motion, we pay that, we owe it, let's go ahead and pay it and, uh.
Second.
Okay.
We got a motion by Steve, a second by Jay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Motion carried.
I got one little, one little thing is, uh, just wanna bring it forward, y'all, me and Lance, I run across something the other day and, well, it's a trial basis deal, it's kind of a camera mount deal that you put on your truck that'll video the roads and it'll detect, uh, base repairs and everything and put all the data on a map. It's a three-month trial deal for six months, Lance.
Six months.
But we need to be able to share our D I, D I S map with the company to be able to link all this.
They're leaving our data to pull all, everything from for location, address, to be able to site specifically where everything is at, where each pothole or whatever was located.
It's not costing.
Is that what one of us is doing at Three Rivers? Are they doing that up at Three Rivers?
I don't know, this is a Rover Defense thing. It's, uh, actually, they do a lot of defense stuff for military and they're getting into the road deal. It's something I kinda run across.
It's kind of an AI-based program, and basically, they send you, uh, smartphones, basically, with the camera, the mounts, everything to go with it. It's already got the program set up on the phone. You mount it in the vehicle and you drive. Speed does not matter, it will detect that, whatever speed you're driving at. And it will pick up every, uh, imperfection in the road, basically, and then map it for you.
And who had those in their trucks?
And then it'll give you a plan to go fix them as well.
Yeah, we're actually, uh.
What's it cost?
We don't know at this point. Basically, it costs per unit because they send you the unit itself, and it's a per-unit cost, and they didn't give me a cost estimate, cuz they said, look, try it out for six months for free. If you like it, fine, if you don't, you know, you may want more than one unit, and then they'll start talking about price.
That's a lot of people, I mean.
It must be high.
Get, get the county.
No, I mean.
Five, six thousand a year.
Mike, are you gonna have a hard time knowing where you need to do road repairs?
No, I don't, but I mean, what we run.
That's what we were doing with, uh.
Right, but what we do is, I mean, this'll actually be able to just put in your truck and like the roads we're getting ready to asphalt or prep or make or we're doing, you'll be able to ride down through there with the flow of traffic and not worry about somebody running over you, and it'll pick all that information up and it'll download it on a map that you can relay back to your crews, exactly your specific locations that need to be fixed on it.
And they'll pick up up to four lanes at a time?
If we're riding down anywhere, we just, I thought we knew our roads better than that.
I mean, we do know our roads, but I mean, we. If you, if you look at your book, at Civiling, it lists a road.
That's right.
It don't list down to where a spot is, it's bad that you may need to dig out.
It gives you an area.
And put some line in or something, yeah.
This is a trial deal that we just wanted to look at and see if it worked.
All for it, and then we'll talk, uh, talk about.
Yeah, it's no cost, I, I don't think it's a big cost. I mean, every program's got a cost to it, but I mean.
I, I just think, it's free, you have to try it free, but I, I think, I, I can't, I just think we know our roads on it. And I know where potholes are.
Will it, will it tell you the addresses that the garbage gets skipped at?
And I actually, actually, what they do is, uh, he said one city, he told us the other day that actually what they've done in one area is they put them on the garbage trucks and it downloads back to the road department wherever potholes appear up.
Yeah.
It tells them where, where the garbage truck made the potholes.
That's right.
But I mean, that, he said, that's just one municipality, the way they use them is they just got them mounted in the garbage trucks cuz they go down every road and, and they just pick up all the detection that goes. Instead of citizens calling in about a pothole, it just automatically sends you the data that you've got to repair.
It's got some type of readers, the thing put on garbage trucks, tag readers, that records and down and loads it. Have you, you hadn't heard of that?
I have not.
You can subscribe to them and they will tell you if that car has been in anywhere where they cover picking up garbage. It's private garbage, they may have it with something, but they got car tag readers in them, and they find a lot of people, our cars, that we're not finding.
I have not seen, I've seen them on a lot of things, garbage trucks not run over them.
All right, we don't need no action on that, though.
No, I just wanted to get y'all's permission and let y'all know what we were working on, this is.
We gonna do an NDL with them, Lance?
The Lance.
We gonna do an NDL with them?
Um, yeah, I think, I think all they're asking for at this point is not parcels or points. All they're asking for is the road data, which we typically give for free. You know, that's not, that's not a charge, they said.
I'm good with that.
All right. I think Keith have, you have more and under additional?
I do.
I guess it's your turn.
All right.
We've got some visitors today.
Visitors.
A few weeks ago, we talked about waste management requesting changing days, making some route changes. How you doing, sir?
Good. I ain't northwest one that baseball.
Say, sir?
Northwest one that baseball.
It's the same map, no, different one.
Yeah.
Just, I got a little more data to. No.
Um, a couple of weeks ago, we talked about waste management, uh, eliminating Wednesday and Saturday pickup, and they've come forth with a proposal. What you have in front of you is the, uh, mailings. One is for changing it from Wednesday, everything will go, Wednesday and Saturday pickup will go away. Half the county will be the southern half. Will change to Monday, Thursday, and the north half of the county above I-20 will go from, uh, Wednesday, Saturday to Tuesday, Friday.
I mean, south end's gonna win, Monday and Thursday, something.
What? It's changing to Monday and Thursday.
So there, there, there's a lot of stuff on here.
If you had Wednesday, Saturday pickup.
Mine is Wednesday, Thursday.
There's a lot that doesn't change. The stuff that is Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday, there's no change. There's just the ones that are affected on Wednesday, Saturday.
There's the Wednesday, Saturday, right?
How much savings is that?
That was absolutely costly. I gotta talk to you about that, cuz I'm gonna start telling you about your potholes. When we hit them, it sends off a signal in our truck. Now, what this does is, I mean, it's clearly defined, it's great line, 20 south or 20 north, and what it allows us to do is have consistency. You've been on Saturday, Saturdays are inconsistent, because we can't have the same driver every Saturday. I mean, hours violations, I mean, they, they, now we're under DOT regulations and they can't, they're not allowed to work over the DOT hours, so we have to put somebody else on there, and this will give you consistency. You'll have the same driver every time, you'll take ownership of the route. We know that for a fact, cuz Monday, Thursday routes are great and Tuesday, Friday routes are great. Same drivers, they take ownership, helpers take ownership, they wanna keep it clean cuz it's theirs. They're not having to split for the bow on Wednesday, Saturday. So, I mean, it's, it's just much more beneficial, we'll have more support in the area. In case a truck goes down, then we can cover it. I mean, Saturday, a truck goes down, down, uh, south or, you know, on those routes, it's a lot.
It's tough, yeah.
It's tough, it's a lot to get to, and, uh.
Let me ask you something, if, on being, I'm, I'm probably gonna be the one that's affected on the south route most cuz Jared, most of his is on.
Yeah, mine stay in the same.
You're staying the same. Uh, notices, I mean, are y'all gonna be the ones sending these notices out to these sites?
Yes, sir.
You gotta copy.
You got it, yeah.
I had to make that fault.
I have to tell you, I saw it, I was pushing.
Not only will we be, we're gonna send these out, we're gonna start on the 8th, sending them out. They'll send out 8th, 9th again, then we'll see with the next week on the 13th, 14th, 15th. And, but we're gonna have social media graphics to deliver to y'all, we're gonna have, uh, PSAs. We're, we're gonna have, and we're also gonna advertise in the newspaper.
Okay.
So we're, you know, we're gonna all outlets to get the word out.
Chuck's here.
And Chuck will write about it too, I would imagine. I mean, is this something for us to just think about now, or do we need to make a decision on it today?
Either one.
It's time to get it going.
Is this more of just an informational thing?
Municipalities, they good, I mean, you, City of Brandon and all them are.
It doesn't affect them, we, we're, we're taking right of town.
Okay.
It says they want to go and affect G-20, so they need to.
No showing today.
Sign off on it so they can get everything in.
Get all wheels on it.
Really, you're the ones who're second most, Brad.
Huh? I know.
What's?
I mean, I don't see an issue with it on my end, I mean, you just get notified to them, and I mean, there'll be some issues the first round to.
First couple of times, but one, one other, I didn't know about it.
It looks like most of my district is affected.
What?
Most of my, my, most of my district is gonna change.
Yours is Wednesdays and Saturdays, you're like Monday.
But that's covered, not down there.
Well, that's same way with me.
I'm all right, I'll.
Hopefully it'll improve.
I don't care.
I think so. I'm good with it.
Absolutely. I mean, the biggest thing is having the same people.
And that's the key, I think the key is Saturdays is always my worst days cuz it was always that somebody, a new driver, they changed the, the way they ran the route and didn't come all the way down thinking this truck was gonna come this far and, and it's gonna take out a lot of the, the skipping part of it.
Some Saturdays, unfortunately, we actually have to rely on the guy on the back of the truck to tell them where they got it.
Yeah. Let's say, let's just happen to say, if you missed, missed somebody on that Monday or Thursday and, and you'd had to still send a truck down that next day to pick it up?
We, we will.
Okay.
I mean, if we miss them on Monday, I mean, we're.
I mean, another process change, I mean, me and you have spoken on Saturdays before too, uh, Steve, you too. So I mean, if something happens, like it is called, let us know. Turn them around, if it's late, cuz we've spoken late before too, we'll get them next morning, whatever it is. But obviously, with any day changes, there, there'll be some of that, get used to it, I didn't know, you know, I forgot, I didn't realize it started, things like that.
There's gonna be a lot of that.
Yeah, we, we expect that the first couple of weeks, you know, to kinda say, okay, guys, I know you went down it, go back. You know, first couple of weeks, something like that happens, but after that, it'll kinda get back to them.
Well, the people, the big thing, the people, they're gonna, some of them just not a, it's not a register that it's gonna be.
They gonna be in a habit of going.
Yeah, going out there.
I'm gonna get Greg to dumb down one of his letters and take it and post it at every church in my district, on bulletin board.
Garbage tased.
Paint it really bright color.
Yeah.
So we need, we need a motion to add this too?
I, I think, uh.
We just don't need words that long.
The contract allows your county administrator to administer on behalf of you, so this is really just notification. Just making sure you guys know that this is about to happen.
I think it'll help.
County administrator implemented, you really have, so does anybody have.
Next thing, we don't have to talk, they're doing it once a day, once a week.
Then it will be handled this way.
We gotta get to.
Going forward.
Until change.
And you can, the savings that y'all gonna be getting, we can, we can utilize some of those.
It's the same, uh, it's the same truck.
Well, hey, where are we on, uh, the house count deal?
Uh, we have a number, uh, we're meeting, we've set up a meeting.
Next Thursday.
Police Management to sit down and go through.
Is it gonna be like the, uh, numbers we got from our government, uh, surveys?
I, I think we're much more efficient in the way that we house count around here, Steve.
Okay, good, good. We lost, I mean, we had like 10,000 people die overnight.
Yeah, yeah, I had, we had a whole bunch disappear.
All right, appreciate you.
Thank y'all, I appreciate it, always good seeing you guys, thank you.
All right. Mr. President, Ms. Vice President, uh, this is with respect to your Gunner Road project. Uh, when Gunner Road came online, was in the process of, of right-of-way acquisition and being designed, all that kinda stuff. We had a different administration in office. Now we have a new administration in office, and, uh, the administration that currently is in office is, um, blue in their orientation, if you catch my drift. So they have, um, they have instructed the Corps of Engineers to review matters associated with wetlands in a different way than under the prior administration. So we have been advised that we need to secure mitigation credits on the Gunner Road project. Two point three four four credits is being required, and the cost is $7,032.
What part of it?
Ms. Bass?
Where the wet spot is?
Right on that below.
Where that little wet spot is?
It's.
God, I know exactly where it is.
So it's a small amount of credits and relatively small amount of money. So what I need is for the authority of either Mr. Calhoun or Mr. Cross to execute the mitigation agreement that is called for and the authority to issue the check and payment to the mitigation bank for $7,032.
I make a motion, we do this before it goes up.
Yes, sir.
All right, make, is it your motion to add it?
Yeah.
Add to it.
All right, second, by Jay, now do I have?
All favors, aye.
Aye.
Yeah. That's where we're going there.
All right.
Now, we got it.
Do you have a motion, Steve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. All right, anything, anything else?
Turn, thank.
Any executive session?
No.
No? All right, do I have a motion or adjourn?
Thanks, Jay.
So moved it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Got out of that one.
Yep. Odds down.
Greg wasn't listening.
All right, I got one bumping.